So I'm Nolan Davis, the chairman of the East Windsor Zoning Board of Appeals. And I would like to officially open this meeting at seven P M. We'll start by. So we'll start off, I'll ask the secretary to read the public notice. Believe you are the secretary.
Did I get nominated for that one?
Wow.
Public hearing legal notice, East Windsor zoning board of appeals, the East Windsor zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, June third, two thousand and twenty four at seven P M. Instruction for how to attend will be posted at the commission agenda. For Z B A number twenty twenty four dash O two application of Route five diversified LLC appealing the notice of violation of section six oh one point five. The East Windsor zoning regulation at one forty to one forty two South Main Street, East Windsor, N B L forty two dash O five dash O sixty four, zone D two. Second one is Z B A twenty twenty four dash zero three application of George C. Wynn, Jr. Appealing the notice of violation of section four oh four B of section of East Windsor zoning regulations at one East Windsor Felt Road. East Windsor, N B L fifty four twenty one dash zero two zero, zone R three. Copies of the above application are available on the town clerk's and zoning board of appeals webpage of the town website. All arrested persons may attend the public hearing to be heard on the topic. Daniel Boudreaux, Assistant Town Player and Zoning Enforcement Officer, posted the journal acquire Monday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty four, and May, Monday, May twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty.
Uh, so before we get to our new hearings, I will make notice for the record that we have received a letter from the applicant for Z B A twenty twenty four dash O three. Mister Wynn, Jr. Um, request there, he has submitted a letter to withdraw his application request for an appeal. So we will not be hearing that case tonight. And we will move directly to uh, letter A, Z B A twenty point four dash O two. Is the applicant here and willing to give a statement and take any questions?
Yes.
Okay, you can start. Yep, you'll have to sign in, uh, make sure that we uh, edit the record.
Hi, my name is Chris, Chris Vitti, I'm the owner at Route five diversified. And uh, we are trying to uh, appeal uh, what I think is a very old plan. Uh, for A one auto, one of our renters that obviously sells cars like everybody else on Route five. To uh, try to get um, more parking out front for them for the retail car business. Um, we're looking. Just in uh, we have that plan in front, uh, in front of the building. Um, I think we have. And then again, I I've uh, I've been on this property. About twenty five years, I've actually had a license there myself because I live in the car business. Um, and. I don't know where it all of a sudden became this restricted with with the parking. Um, it, I remember when I applied for my A one license. Um, that was about eight years ago, even nine years ago, uh, it was uh. It was determined that that motor vehicle, that the property was called uh, unlimited. Parking uh, availability for the dealership. And there was no really stepped. Uh, amount of spots in the front or in the back of the building. So this is um, you know, I, there's, right now, I think we like, we'd like to have. Eight cars on each side in the front of the building. Uh, eight on each side, and then. For some reason, to the right is is is. Looks like seven or eight spots are blocked off. For I don't know what reason, I mean. Um, there's plenty of room for fire engine, there's, you know, we 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 did clear out where there are parking. Uh, you know, between the buildings, which is good, that's no good. I've been staying on top of that, I know someone drives by and takes pictures over a while and I stay on top of them. I've been actually, if they haven't been doing what I've been saying. I've been actually physically moving the car with my record, just come on guys, please just stay on top of this. Um, I am here today because, you know what, they they're good renters, they they, you know, they 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 pay for as much frontage as I think I I could try to give them. Um, you know, looking up and down Route five, I don't think we're doing anything that's that's. You know, different than what, you know, Billy Hanson and his four dealerships packed into that little property is doing. I mean, I I can't ride a bike through his property, let alone get a fire engine through there. So I I'm not, I'm just not quite sure if we can, you know, sort of come to an agreement to to. To create more retail spots for A one.
Um, does anyone have any questions?
So all these areas I've read here are spots that are not allowable parking, or anything in the original plan? I tried to uh, I tried to get uh. The new tenant, he was the 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 most recent uh, person who applied for a license. Uh, this license, I think, my guys, go go to, go somewhere and dig up what you had for 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 a plot plan and get your license. So you can, you know, because because you're saying, well, you know, this, you know, because I showed it to them, you know, listen. I know, I I know this doesn't look right to me, doesn't look right to me, so you know, absolutely not, we you know, but we certainly wouldn't, you know. It's 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 letting basically half their retail spots out front. Um, now, what we, you know, again, this stuff right here, that's unacceptable, and I don't, I don't, you know. Did did they have cars parked here? Yes, parallel to the pile, and that's no good, and that's been rectified and and taken care of. Um, to the best of my ability, I sometimes physically have to move them myself, which I do. Um, this, you know. I think they they call some customer parking here, this and that, customer parking, they do have spots back here for customer spot parking. This, I have no reason why that's plotted off, this I can see is right next to the, you know, right next to the building itself. And they do no longer park cars there, they can only be parked parallel, so it can only be two or three cars there to begin with. That's not, you know, a substantial amount, but you know, this is, you know, this is, this is, this is the Hollywood area, this is where, you know, people drive by and see what they're, what they're selling, and that's. For that, for that, for this business, it's crucial. And again, like, I don't know, you guys drive up and down Route five, I mean, they got guys that are parking cars on the lawn two feet from the road. And you know, and that that's not happening here. Well, it was, we curtailed. You know, they'll try to get away with as much as they can, but I think now it's very tight, it's very compact, it the the place looks fantastic. And that's um, that's what we're trying to do.
Um, I have a question.
Yes.
So let me see if I understand this correctly, okay, on the second page, so you were asked, you, your 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 renter. Right. Was asked, you were asked to uh, go back and get a new site plan.
Well, they they have to, they have to, anytime license is uh, you know, on it, where they have to. So they have to come to the town, that has to sign off, and they have to go in with a plot plans.
Right, so that plan. Shows that you can have six parking spots in the front. Do you have six?
We have six?
Yeah, are you parking only six cars in front of the building?
No.
Okay, so, okay, so that would mean that you're in violation of the site.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but but we, what I'm, what we're saying is, where did this, where did this come from? I wish this was, this isn't.
You know, Chris?
Yeah.
That's, that line is our, the new drawing.
I know, but it was drawn off of the bolt, of whatever they had that they sort of dug up. I guess the town.
So it's the plan that's filed with the town.
Yes.
Have you filed a new plan?
They had the, they had wrote filed that uh, at least, at least. Had a copy from the town or from the architect or.
Why would the town lose pay for it to file? Everything is filed properly, as far as I understand it, in this facility, correct?
The, we had an old plan. We got one from D M B at their. Um, another, another quarter, it's like. Give her information. Um, this is all tied to an enforcement action, so the enforcement action is being appealed, so I don't want to be careful. But in uh, the January. Which, that was the means of um, coming into compliance with enforcement, with committing a modification. Some of the things that I mentioned, it was issued January third of this year, and that's what I think.
Sorry, the D Z C approved that site plan?
Yes.
And that's the one that's in the document now?
Yes.
Okay. This this one. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was trying to clarify.
Okay.
The current plan says that you can park six, you have six spaces out front, you're saying you have more cars?
Yes.
So technically, you're out of compliance?
Yes.
Okay.
That that's what I was trying to say, I just wanted to make sure.
I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't quite sure if the plans from the same motor vehicle that were, you know, were matched up were the same, I I I didn't even know the answer to that.
So I have, I have a couple more questions. When did six oh one point five come into existence? Probably.
I know.
But but it's still part of the town ordinance and and rules and regulations, so, okay. And you're parenting your renter. I said, you're parenting your renter, is what I'm hearing. Correct? Because you're responsible for the property.
Yes, sir.
Just because ignorance of the policy, if I get caught speeding in town, what am I going to claim? So.
I agree.
You're you're. Do you have a contractually written in your agreement with with the renter not to overstep if they have to get the license?
Um. I don't, I don't think we have, I don't think we were that detailed in in the lease, uh, for the compliance, because I didn't.
But you're the owner of the property?
Yeah.
And you're responsible for that property to be compliant with the. We enforce everybody equally up and down Route five? Okay. Then nine, my personal opinion is. If you have to use your record to move their stuff. Your parents. That is, you got four notices, you're here before it for a fifth time. Site plan is what it is. I don't see an issue.
Okay, I I I was unclear, I thought we were appealing, not the citation, but actually. Maybe a change in the plan itself.
That's definitely my question.
That's the point.
Why is it an appeal of the parking layout, or is it an appeal of violation?
The appeal of violation, obviously.
Yeah, I I think it is.
I'm not, I'm not.
We're not, we're not laying a part yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was.
I'm sorry. I was on the, I thought we were appealing the whole thing.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Um, is the zoning, I'm sorry, is the zoning enforcement officer going to make a presentation?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so if no one else has any other questions for the applicant, uh, I will take any arguments from those who are opposed to this.
Okay. So I will read most of this for the record of my. My recollection, uh, so this parcel was subject to an auto out of sales and service business week that I took. I performed last year, the townwide effort between the months of February, March, two thousand and twenty three. The owner received violations, citations, and ultimately appeared before our town citation hearing officer. For noncompliance with section six oh one point five of the town of East Windsor zoning regulations. These zoning regulations state. A, all parking spaces for vehicles being parked, displayed, or stored shall be shown on the site plan. C, the number of vehicles shown on an approved plan shall be the maximum number of vehicles allowed to be parked, displayed, or stored on site. D, no vehicles shall be parked, displayed, or stored in any areas of the site not designated as a parking facility. To come, to correct this compliance issue, the owner, Mister Chris Vitti. Of Route five diversified was ordered by the East Windsor citation hearing officer. To acquire a current survey with the site plan showing the parking spaces that were added since the last plan, which is dated nineteen ninety four. And that is in your packet, it's the only plan that the D M B have on file, when I uh, got a copy from them. And they had to appear before the planning and zoning commission and secure approval of a modification to add parking. So the timeline leading up to this current notice of violation, nothing prior, that's subject to this appeal tonight. January twenty third, two thousand and twenty four, the East Windsor P Z C approved a site plan modification for parking. February seventh, two thousand and twenty four, I sent an email reminding the owner of the new site plan. Noting that the amount of cars that were approved to be parked in the, parked in the front. Of the property at A one auto, which is attached. February eighth, two thousand and twenty four, I spoke with Mister Chris Vitti in person here at Town Hall, demonstrating on the plan in front of us. Of the areas in which cars were not approved to be parked, and I advise again to have them removed, that map is also attached. February twelfth, two thousand and twenty four, a second email was sent advising the owner of the areas in the front where the cars were not approved to be parked. Along with a map highlighting these areas, also both attached. And advised for a third time that the cars were to be removed in order to be compliant with the new site plan. I advise that if this is not done by February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four, a notice of violation would be issued. February twenty second, two thousand and twenty four, the notice of violation was issued. The property owner was given until March seventh to remove the noncompliant cars. March seventh, I had the first contact from the property owner since the violation was sent and received, asking to appeal this decision. And please note that prior to the submission of the new site plan to the P Z C, it was advised both, both verbally and through email, both attached. That all desired areas for parking or display of motor vehicles needed to be reflected on the new plan. There was told in very specific terms that after approval, any cars parked in nondesignated spaces would be in violation. The first draft of new plan that they submitted was returned to them, verifying they could not park any cars in spaces that were not marked for cars. They made some changes and resubmitted another plan. It was then verified for a second time that these plans that they were submitting were the final plans to be approved, and those are all attached. So it's my opinion that this violation should be upheld in accordance with the East Windsor zoning regulations. And that the property owner be required to remove all automobiles that are not in compliance with the current approved site plan.
Okay, and for the record, that was Danielle Boudreaux, zoning enforcement officer for the town of East Windsor. Uh, does anyone on the board have any questions for the zoning officer? Yep. Yeah.
Um, so you did a townwide sweep?
Yes.
You didn't just go one place.
There were, I believe it was, I have all the stats in my zoning reports, um. There were several that were out of compliance, they immediately contacted me, what do we need to do, provided new site plans, um. Were approved, uh, they were minor, it was done administratively, and then there were two that needed to go back before the P Z C, because they were major, I mean, they added three hundred. Um, it was another property that ended, I think, a hundred and six. And they went before the P Z C and got new plans, mostly so we have everything currently on record, so if we do. We're trying to do a townwide sweep once a year to keep them all in compliance, but we have the current site plans as to where cars should be parked.
I do have a question, is this mainly for the auto sales along Route five, or is it all businesses around town?
This was specifically an auto sales repair, um. It's, yeah, auto sales and repair businesses.
Because I believe in ninety four, that business was a pawn shop, uh, a gun shop, and I can see those shops were, those parking spaces were probably laid out. For that business, not laid out for auto sales. So it hasn't been revised since then, except for this latest one. Which is still going by the old plan of it being pawn shop. But that was the latest, totally, what's allowed business in there before the auto sales.
This is the newest plan that was revised by their, their, it was B L, um, sorry, Rob's, Rob Newton of B C S Group. Um, revised these plans, based it off an old plan, added the spaces we spoke of, added three hundred and six spaces.
Three hundred and six pages of that.
And the part in front, the P Z C specifically said we wanted the six spaces in front of A one parking to be customer only, and put a sign. Um, which was agreed to at that meeting.
Okay.
And approved.
Okay.
So I could add some numbers to this sweep. There were thirty dealerships that Danielle um. Made visits to, and she did a preliminary letter to let folks know she was going out to do the sweep. Nineteen of them in sync. Were in compliance. And then a remainder needed to come into compliance, and she worked with that, and got that little down to. That was a year ago.
Further questions?
Well, I just have a comment, if that's all right, uh, Mister Vitti, right? I, I understand your frustration and maybe some confusion, I don't want to assume you're confused, but.
That's, that's very possible, again, you know, we're, we're not. I'm not there day to day, you know, basically, so I'm running a different business, so it didn't, sometimes things do get misconstrued.
So just, but just so that you understand, so it's clear, you know, the responsibility of the zoning board of appeals, this, this commission is to. Um, either reject or approve the zoning officer's decision.
Gotcha.
Um, and at this point, you admitted you're out of compliance, um, you know. I I don't know if it would help to go back to planning and zoning, but that would be the body where you would have to go back to.
Yeah, that's very good. Now I know where more steps are needed.
Right. Right. Clearly.
Thank you.
Okay, well, there's not any further questions, um, I would uh, move to close the hearing towards a vote.
Can't do that, it's public here.
Yeah. Can't do that right now. Oh, oh, it's right. Yes, I'm going to go into public comment. A little rusty.
I don't, I don't know, I would hear for the other application.
Gotcha.
But I just wanted to point that out.
I go with that, I certainly appreciate it.
Stay out of trouble.
Okay, well, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, and we will close this hearing and move towards uh, celebrations and vote by the. Make a motion to close the hearing. Motion of second, although there.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Um, would anybody like to make any comments or, or ask any questions amongst the members?
Well, I guess I can't, um. My main comment is that this plan is, in my opinion, is unfair for our dealership, this is laid out for a retail store. It's not laid out for a car dealership, if you're trying to sell a car, you can't just have six spots in front for customers. When you go up and down Route five, it's all auto sales, it's all cars, like Mister Vitti said, parked out on the grass in front, or on the pavement in front. Um, I don't particularly, it's not my business selling cars, but I know. You know, it's location, 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 and. You know, I uh, my opinion is that it's a. You know, you're trying to get the the product out front, and I can understand where, what they're doing. This is common.
Anybody else?
But just to, just to clarify. They are out of compliance with their zoning regulations, correct?
The issue is not whether or not cars can be parked there, the issue is that those parking spaces need to be shown on the site plan. So they can.
So. The appeal. To appeal the violation.
Yeah, not to appeal the actual. Situation. Yeah, so I think that's the moving forward, whether or not the appeal was sold. See if they have any other comments? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to move towards voting.
Say in favor.
Oh. Make a, uh, make a motion to move towards about bringing Z B A twenty twenty four to the.
Uh, all those in, is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, there should be a second, and then I should make a comment. I'll say, okay.
Uh, any comment?
Yes, I I just want to clarify what we're voting.
Yeah.
What yes and what no means.
Yep. Um, so if you're voting in favor of uh. This motion. Then you are voting in favor of the applicant's appeal. That overturning the zoning board, or the zoning officers enforcement. If you're voting no, then you're essentially siding with the zoning officers uh, violation. Okay, is that clear?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those against, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it, and the applicant's appeal of a notice of violation does not move forward. Okay. So we will be moving next to other business. We have other business. Okay. So then we will move down to just general public participation. Seeing no public participation, uh, then move down to the approval of minutes from May the sixth, twenty twenty four. Uh, just as I know, I was not here for that meeting, so I will have someone else make a motion. Oh, yes, in order to vote on the. Minutes, we'll need to officially see the all minutes that were members of the board that day. So that was David Swain. And Scott Ward.
Yep.
So you are now officially part of the vote. Um, and you can make a motion if you would like to approve or deny the minutes.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the town of East Windsor Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, minutes for regular meeting Monday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty four. Uh, with two corrections or addition, uh, with absent, Dan Noble was absent, that's not on there. Uh, and guest speakers were the Morris's, uh, that are in there via Zoom, uh, they're out of town. Uh, and that's all I can see on the minutes for corrections or additions.
Okay, so that's a motion made, is there a second?
I'll say.
Second? All right, all those in favor?
I say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Close post. And I was asking for that. So let's see. Okay, uh, so that is approved, moving forward, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, unfortunately, I should have done that. Okay, you can.
Yeah, I know.
If you'd like to make that. Uh, so you, you want to officially make that? Okay, you'll, you'll do it, okay, okay, so there's no need there. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Take a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
We'll speak. At seven point nine. Thank you.
It's the video. Yeah.
Take the world. I'm done.
Yeah.
So. With everybody here.
Yeah, yeah, uh, that's. Carrying, I suppose, or anything else, so now we're all the constantly.
I'll give them a go.
Yes. Yeah. Alright, everybody happy to the event before. For the longest time, I was here to take care of.
I know that.
Where it gets on my shirt, and there you go. Handling problems, you know.